I have one more. So we both just graduated.
Sorry. Do I have to move my position? And will you be hiring this position? So do I need to... So I'm not going to be hired. I've been here for a while. I'm like, I'm holding you guys together a while. I'm holding you guys together a while. We're searching for a new supervisor for this position. But I've always been with the same industry. I used to be at Brandon's before when Cheryl was them. How long has that been? When she was at that town. I've been here four years. So if you'd like to... You guys want to... So you have a little bit more like... More energy and... I agree.
Okay, welcome everyone. Welcome to our city council meeting for June 28th. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And if you could please arise for the pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Musgrove, please lead us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you could please remain standing for the invocation this evening. I guess that's actually going to be me. So please bow your heads. God of grace, we invite you to preside over this meeting. When we have different opinions, give us the unity of spirit. Help us to patiently listen to others as they share their points of view. Help us to work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome for our community of San Marcos. Help us to work as a whole rather than as individuals trying to promote our own agendas. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work together on our shared mission. We pray this in your name, amen. Please be seated. Okay, so first order of business is presentations. And we have the youth commission here. Oh, roll call. Roll call. Goodness gracious, I'm so excited to hear you all sitting there. Roll call, please, Mr. Skolik.
Councilmember Musgrove?
Here.
And Councilmember Nunez is absent this evening. Councilmember Walton?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. Okay, now the exciting part, sorry. Okay, so we're going to have our youth commission give us a presentation this evening. Welcome. You want to hear all about what you've been up to.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and city council members. We are the youth commission and we are excited to present to you tonight what we have been working on this past year. My name is Megan Hanks and I've been a part of the youth commission for two years now.
My name is Alexa Jennings and I've been with the youth commission for six years.
I'm Chelsea Johnson and I've been with the youth commission for a year now.
My name is Natalie Johnson and this is my first year on youth commission, but I'm really excited.
And then we actually have a message here from one of our council members that couldn't be here today. I will read to you what she wrote for us to say. She said, Dear Madam Mayor and council members, my name is Nikita Jedov and I'm the chair of the San Marcos Youth Commission. I truly apologize that I cannot be there in person today, but I hope you find our work and what we have been doing interesting. Upon coming back in person, we are working on a variety of projects for the future, a notable one being the diversity town hall, which we will speak on in the presentation. Thus, we look forward to interacting more and forming a stronger relationship as a commission and we are excited to expand our endeavors. Thank you for your time and support.
So getting into our presentation, here we have... Went back. There we go. Here we have our 2021 through 2022 work plan, which includes our focus areas, which are civic engagement, special events, volunteering, sustainability outreach, all to present to you guys. And this basically has acted as a guide for us for the year and has helped us with our many achievements.
So we have many goals here. We have many goals here on the youth commission. And with those goals, we have achieved many things. And those being, we developed a work plan for 2021 and 2022. We volunteered at many events such as the bike rodeo, the tree lighting, and we went back to in-person meetings in February. We hosted two teen movie nights, completed a teen survey, and are in the process of redeveloping our partnership with the library.
So one of our achievements this year includes our teen survey, as mentioned, which is basically where we put together questions to find out teens' interests. And we sent this to several schools and friends that we know of living in San Marcos. And we have found that respondents were mainly interested in college prep presentations, movies in the park, skate parks, teen game nights, art events, and they're most likely to participate in concerts, movie nights, esports, and sports and exercise. And we're just planning on using this in the future to better our engagement with the youth.
Okay, so this is one of the questions that was asked in our survey of what type of activities would you participate in right now? And our survey showed that 80% of people spend time with their friends and then 60% of people spend time on social media most of the time.
And then we have another example from our teen survey, which asks if they would be interested in a career day slash college prep presentation and that we found that 70 to 80% of who we surveyed would be interested in this.
And then we also asked people on the teen survey how likely they were to attend the following. And it says that 43% of people who responded would want to do some activity that involves the beach. 36% of people want something that involves sports. And 26% of people wanted to do something that has to do with exercise.
And then moving on to reestablishing our partnership with the library. Due to COVID, we were not able to continue certain partnerships such as our library. So we're definitely focusing on bringing this partnership back through Kids Connect to Culture, which is where youth commissioners present a specific culture to other youth at the library through activities such as reading and worksheets. I did this several times and it was also a great experience for the youth commissioners themselves to engage with the kids in this aspect. And we definitely value diversity in today's environment. So bringing this back is one of our main goals. And we're just hoping this program can lead to even something even bigger than this, which is our diversity town hall. We're hoping to maybe plan this for our upcoming 2022 through 23 year and perhaps have some sort of activity in the civic center highlighting culture, such as food and dance and having panel discussions.
Okay, so we're excited to be partnering with or potential partnering with the San Marcos Prevention Coalition. And this involves, we learned, this involves and we learned much about drug awareness. And we are looking, like I said, we're looking to be a part of their investigation team. Basically, what the San Marcos Prevention Coalition does is they take a bunch of people, volunteer ages 20 and under, and go to all the places that sell tobacco in our city. And we make sure that we go all at one time. That way, nobody can be in communications. And we go on a random date. Each year is different on the day, so they can't be known of when we're coming. And we just go make sure that they're not selling tobacco to underage people that should not be having tobacco.
And then finally, here are just a few pamphlets from our two movie nights, where we watched Mean Girls and also A Quiet Place Part Two. And we're definitely hoping to have many more events like this now that COVID is lifting. So yeah, thank you for listening to our presentation.
Well, thank you very much. So I'm going to ask you guys a question, each one of you. What was your favorite event of the year, of the last year?
We didn't have it last year, but like throughout my time on the youth commission, I really liked doing the Fourth of July event. We got to see a lot of people from San Marcos there. And we honestly just had a great time with each other. So it was really fun.
So I would say that my favorite in the past have definitely been the tree lighting and the Fourth of July. I just really like the environment it puts you in and it really puts you in. Like obviously for the tree lighting, I love Christmas, so it's my favorite time of year. And then Fourth of July, I love the fireworks, so that's always really nice, too.
I would say my favorite this year would have been volunteering at the bike rodeo. I think it was really nice to see all the families and kids getting out there, having a good time. It was nice to get to know some people in the community.
My favorite was the movie night because you got to meet new people in our area.
A quiet place, too? That doesn't even sound at all appealing to me. I don't like scary movies. I think I'd probably be crying, so.
Me neither, we're on the same page.
That's awesome. Any other questions of the council? Yes, council member.
I think it's very cool that you're doing your own research and collecting your own data on what young people in the community want to see and what they like. And based on your own research and what you just presented us, do you see yourself doing things different next year? Are there new ideas? You mentioned having an event where you have panels and things. Are you taking the data that you've gathered and are you going to use that to make decisions about what you do next year?
Yeah, so a lot of what our survey touched base on was what type of events the teens or the youth of San Marcos wants to participate in, yeah, in the next year. And we found that it's very difficult for the youth commission to be in touch with the youth of San Marcos, surprisingly. But we found that the easiest way is through events like these so that they know who we are. And we're hoping that we can use this information from our survey to just see what they're interested in and perhaps have activities for them that like have to do with, I guess, the majority of what this survey is saying.
Wonderful, thank you. And Alexis, this is your last year on the youth commission. You've been on there six years, right? You're graduating and going off to college. Wow. Or you did graduate and you're off to college.
I have one question. How many teens responded to your survey?
I don't know if I can give you.
Just approximately.
Approximately, I would say 100, 200? I'd say approximately 200 people.
Good, okay, thank you.
Good luck to you, Alexa. Thank you, ladies. Okay, next order of business is the consent calendar. And then we'll be going on to boards and commissions after that. Do any council members wish to pull any items from the consent calendar? We have eight items.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. The consent calendar is approved. Any oral communications, Mr. Skolik? Okay, new business. And we are going to be going out of order today. We will be listening to our youth commission first. I understand you have some things to do. And yeah, you want to go out and have fun. We do, too, but that's okay. We can definitely do that. So everyone will have, that will be applying for a commission this evening, will have two minutes to tell us about yourself and why you would like to be on one of our commissions. So for the youth commission, our first applicant will be Reed Imoto Nicholas, followed by Nicholas Damian and then Rena Damian. So are they here this evening? Oh, there we go.
Hi, I'm Reed Imoto-Garray. I'm currently in sixth grade going to seventh at SF Santa Fe Christian Middle School. And one reason why I want to do this is because I don't want to help people. Helping is like temporarily. But I want to change the way people think in their minds. Because if the older people of this community could change their minds about how they think, let's say, instead of riding their bikes every day and getting in trouble, they could stay home and study and help others do their work as well. Well, because they're older, the younger kids want to follow them and be just like them. So therefore, if we can change the way the older kids in this community can think, then therefore, they have a chance of changing the lives of the younger ones. And those people will grow up and then change the lives of the younger ones and therefore, changing our community for generations to come. And that's it.
Thank you, Reed. That sounds like leading by example.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Okay, I agree with you. Thank you very much. And next will be Nicholas Damian, followed by Rena Damian.
Good evening, council members. My name is Nicholas Damian. And the reason why I want to join the youth commission is because I'd really want to make a difference. And the youth commission, through my research, is a way, at my age, where I can make a difference through the community. And I'm a strong believer in community. I really want to see that difference. And I think with working together, by working together with the other commission members and looking out into the community and seeing what they want to, I really think that's the biggest way to make a difference. I personally am a strong believer in the arts. And I would hope that if I were in commission, we could help nurture the arts more for, not just like me personally, but there's so many kids that would love to perform and just have more of a connection to the arts. And I really think the arts can change someone for the better, of course. And I just think that with more access to the arts, a lot more people would be inclined to do it. And you would see a lot more benefit academically and socially. I surrender the rest of my time to the council.
Great, thank you very much, Nicholas. Good job. Rena Damian. And I have to ask, are you two related? I'm thinking you are. That's wonderful.
Hi, I'm Rena Damian. And a little bit about myself is that I am going to my junior year and I go to San Marcos High School. During my time this last two years, I have been a part of the Future Farmers of America program and I've become one of the officers for the following year. And during this time, I've been able to go to multiple events across the county and meet new people, new students, all across San Diego. And some of them have become some of my good friends. And our program has grown a lot. And I've been really been able to make a name for myself at my school and teach people a lot about our program. I want to be a part of the youth commission because I feel that I have a lot of experience outreach to new students who may have not been very interested in our program before. And some of these people that I met have just become so in love with our program, whether or not they actually go out into the field and become a farmer, like I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rena. Okay, so this evening, we have two regular positions and one alternate position. So what I'm thinking is, we have an alternate right now, which is Nathra Gopal Krishnan. Krishnanan, I think I said that right. I would like to move Nathra up to a regular position from an alternate, which would leave then one regular position and two alternates. And there are three council members here this evening, so you all get to choose who is going to be an alternate and who is going to be a regular position. We have three wonderful candidates, by the way. Oh, and one thing that I would like to say is if you are chosen as an alternate, we need you to show up because that actually will help move you up as well. And then also, you know, we would just really like to see your smiling faces and we always need the help at our events, right? So anyway, if you are selected as an alternate, it's just as important as actually being up here on the dais. And if people are not here, then absolutely you need to fill in. So you get a lot of experience, anyway. Lots of people have different things, sports and that sort of thing. So maybe they can't show up to a meeting, so it's just as important to be here. So wanted to make sure you all knew that. So my motion would be to move up Nathra and as a regular from an alternate. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I'll make a motion to move Rena as a regular position.
Okay, I'll second that. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion passes. So we have two alternates left.
I'll make a motion for Nicholas to take one of the alternate positions. And emphasizing that you do need to go to the meetings because not everyone will be there and your voice will matter.
Yes, definitely. Okay, that's a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, council member?
You know, I'll make a motion that we make Reed an alternate as well.
Okay, great. And that's a motion, I'll second that. Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion passes. So if you are selected as an alternate, Reed and Nicholas, please definitely show up every time because truly you do need to fill in very often. And congratulations to all of you. And congratulations again to you, Alexa, in graduating. And we're very excited to see you all very soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we will have our budget review committee. So we have four regular positions and one alternate position. The incumbents that are reapplying are Glenn Nguyen, Chris Freeman, and Marie Marsinko. She's currently an alternate. Are they all here this evening? Got two minutes to speak. If you'd like to tell us why you'd like to remain on the budget review committee. So that'd be Glenn, followed by Chris, and then Marie. But I don't think I see Glenn this evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Chris Freeman, here for a reappointment to the budget review committee. I've served as the chair to that committee for the past two years. Honored to have been able to do that. That's an office that we nominate annually and seem to pass the torch every few years. So looking forward to one of my fellow members having an opportunity next year. Little about myself, my wife and I moved to San Marcos nine years ago. We live on a cute little street over in District One. And we have three kids now. And I have my bachelor's degree in accounting. I worked in retail management for 17 years, where I had a lot of responsibility over monthly profit and loss statements, hiring, staffing, scheduling, inventory management. I currently now work for the city of Oceanside. I'm an analyst in the IT department. I spent three years in the water utilities department as an analyst and I moved up to IT a year ago. Budget review committee is a committee I really like being a part of. It reinforces what I do daily in my current job. I feel like I'm able to ask good questions and keep the conversation moving forward. Jack and Lisa run really tight ship, as you guys know, so they tee it up pretty easily for us. But the past four years that I've served on the committee, it was a much different place four years ago that we're almost back to now. So lots of ups and downs over that time. So it's been my pleasure to serve and I hope to be reappointed again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see you have a helper with you today. There you go, youth commissioner. Okay, next up is Marie Marsinko and then followed by Salvador Roman. Oh, Salvador's not here this evening. He actually sent an email, okay. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board. Hi, how are you doing? I think I filled in for an alternate for a few months, the last session. So I'm reapplying. I really enjoyed my time there. It was very interesting and eye-opening to see how the city manages and runs. And I really appreciated that I could actually give input into that, into the budget. I currently lived in San Marcos for five years. And that was my first session that I served on the committee. I'm currently in sales, so I have a $9 million territory. So I'm really familiar with budgets and spending. So I'm really excited to try and be on the board again. And just wanted to let you know, I'm interested. So that was all, thanks.
Great, thank you, Marie. Okay, we have four regular and one alternate open and we have four applicants. So would anyone from the council care to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion, Mayor.
Okay.
That we move Marie to one of the full-time positions being vacated.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any other motions?
Can we, do we have to do them individually? Or can I group them together? Okay, so I will make a motion that we appoint Glenn Nguyen, Chris Freeman, and Salvador Roman to regular positions.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so that means, Mr. Skolik, in December, when we notice for the January appointments, could we please let everyone know we need an alternate? That would be great. Actually, that would be two alternates, wouldn't it? Yeah, two alternates, right, two alternates, okay. Moving on to Climate Action Plan Working Group. We have one regular position open and two applicants. We have Marcelo Kim and Rebecca Roseller. So Marcelo, if you could come on down, tell us about yourself, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Marcelo Kim. All right, good evening, council members, everyone listening. So I'm Marcelo Kim. I moved to San Marcos about two years ago. I've been living in North County for the last seven to continue my career as a high school teacher. I currently teach chemistry. And I think my job is what drove me into thinking about what my civic involvement would be. As a teacher, I always think about how am I presenting the material? How are students receiving? As a teacher, I always think about how am I presenting the material, how are students receiving the material and what I can do personally in my classroom, but also what are the bigger systems involved? How do I then think about what can I do personally in order to think about what my students experience overall? And that extends into what the teachers also see. So this is why I got more involved with my Teachers Association, appointed to leadership. This is where I had the taste of, you know, parliamentary procedures, the democratic process and it, I like it a lot, which is kind of weird, you know, thinking about, you know, how Robert's Rules of Orders are and everything. Um, but that's where, you know, I was able to be in the Budget Committee for CTA, uh, helping to manage, you know, two hundred million dollars for two hundred seventy thousand members, um, just as an advisory. Uh, but this is why, you know, thinking about the bigger systems. I know that I don't have a lot of experience in the energy sector, but the charge for the Climate Action Committee, I think personally with my ability to synthesize ideas, um, with my leadership training, I can also have a sense of consensus, think about how do I approach different things and manage people in general. I think I would be a good um, just kind of like a buffer in that committee to send out that um, that charge to make a good presentation and that's time. So thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
I have, I have a question. Um, if for some reason you're not selected on this, um, did you have other committees you were interested in?
I am, but um, I haven't thought too much about it.
Okay, would you be willing to serve on any, oh, you have Community Foundation and Planning. Um, would you be interested in serving on the Budget Committee if for some, if you're not selected on this one or, or no?
I think so, because that would kind of line up exactly to what I've been doing with CTA.
Right, that's what I was thinking, okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Marcelo. Uh, Rebecca Rosler. Or Rosler, I'm not sure.
The second one, hi there. My name is Becky Rosler and good evening to the council, to the mayor, the staff, um, and fellow community members. Um, I'm excited to be here tonight, um, to, yeah, stand behind my submission, uh, to be a part of the Climate Action Plan Working Group. I am a North County local, um, grew up in Vista and moved to San Marcos in two thousand four. And as I was growing up, I just developed that love for the environment through camping, through scouts, through going to zoo school, um, out at the Wild Animal Park and whatnot. And that led me to pursuing a degree in environmental biology. Um, after my undergrad was done, I taught uh, outdoor ed up at the Ocean Institute in Dana Point and really passed on that passion to um, to students and, which was a really great treat. Um, following that, I ended up in the nonprofit sector. I've been doing marketing and communications, events and fundraising, particularly around the spheres of poverty alleviation, um, foods, food insecurity and environmental restoration. Um, the two, the last two organizations I've been a part of have been international and with everything that came up in two thousand twenty, I just realized my focus could shift and should shift to what's happening locally and have been pushed um, to get more involved here at home in San Marcos. Um, during that time as well, I've gone back to school to obtain a master's in resilient and sustainable communities. And so as you saw in my application, I've taken classes called Understanding Climate Change and Energy and Environment, Land Use Planning and Policy. And part of my text has been the City of San Marcos's General Plan and Climate Action Plan, so have become very familiar with those two documents. Um, this last spring, I joined the San Diego Regional Water Quality Board as a graduate assistant, working on communication projects for them, helping to translate the science into um, pieces for the general public. And that has taught me a lot about not only uh, federal government, but state government and, and trickling down to even local government and um, yeah, how those systems work. But I think perhaps the biggest uh, reason behind why I would want to be a part of this group was um, the experience that I had while working um, with that environmental restoration nonprofit. I got to go meet farmers in rural Oaxaca and on the slopes of Mount Kilimanjaro, um, in the hillsides above Port-au-Prince, Haiti. And they're dependent on the land, they're dependent on our weather systems and because of our actions here in the United States and in other developed countries. We're impacting them, thank you, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, uh, okay.
Becky, question for you. You only have the Climate Action Plan Working Group on your application, is that the only one you're interested in?
Um, I would also be interested in the Community Foundation.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion?
Sure, I'd like to uh, move to appoint Becky Rosler to the Climate Action Plan Working Group.
Okay, I'll second that. Uh, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Uh, moving on to the Planning Commission, we have one regular position open and we have um, let's see, three, I think we have three. Oh gosh, where's my list now? I think we have three people that are applying, yes, um, are two alternates. Uh, so it would be Jim Garcia, followed by Diana Kavanaugh, and then Marcelo Kim would be um, the next speaker. Good evening. I'm sorry, which one are we? Finally. Okay. I know, it's hard to keep it all straight, isn't it? I can hardly get through my notes.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council Staff. Uh, my name is Jim Garcia. I currently serve as an alternate on the Planning Commission. And in my current term as an alternate on the commission, I have sat on the dais uh, more than I have as an alternate, to be honest. And uh, I'm honored to serve with such talented, knowledgeable and diverse members of our current city planning commission. They're awesome. Um, it's been welcome wealth of knowledge for me, uh, my first term. And I understand, and the understanding of my role in the planning commission has been uh, just a wealth of education on how our city operates and the future of our city. I have learned the value of serving our beautiful city and the responsibility that comes with every decision that has to be made for the future of our city. I have lived in San Marcos for over thirty years. My wife and I have raised our children here and all of them live in the area and all have children of their own, our granddaughters. Now, I commute to Los Angeles for work, not every day, but on different television shows that I work on. I am a very qualified IOTC Union Cinematographer. Uh, I work on some of the most popular television shows in Hollywood. In fact, tonight on primetime on NBC, I have two shows that I worked on, America's Got Talent and Dancing With Myself. You'll see my credit on there in the camera department. Um, I work in LA and other venues like Georgia, New Mexico, where there's a lot of filming going on, but I don't want to live in LA. And uh, I'm donating my time to serve in the city I live in and do my part to make sure it doesn't become an LA. And uh, I believe in the leadership of our city that I've lived here over thirty years has done a phenomenal job and uh, of, of governing our city and the future and, and the growth in our city. And it's tough, it's not easy, is what I've learned as being an alternate commissioner. Um, but I, I, I'm honored to serve alongside of, of my civic uh, as my civic duty with you as well.
Thank you.
But.
Sorry, sorry, your two minutes is up, sorry.
It's up, all right.
I don't know why it's not beeping this evening.
Sorry about that.
It's got issues.
All right.
Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Um, okay, Diana Kavanaugh, followed by, sorry, it looks like it's out of order, but I'm just going by the list um, that I have. And, and, okay, so Diana, you're next, yes.
Hi, um, good evening, council members. Um, my name's Diana Kavanaugh. I am currently serving on the Planning Commission as an alternate. I started in two thousand twenty as an alternate and was appointed to a second term as alternate this past January. Um, and before that, I served um, for six years on the Student and Neighborhood Relations Commission as they were working through um, some issues with tobacco and uh, the jewel tobacco items that were being pushed to our younger kids. Um, I've been a resident of San Marcos for thirty-eight years. My kids go to school here, I work for the school district and I uh, like being involved in uh, volunteer committees and being involved with the city that I live in. So I would um, enjoy being appointed to a permanent position on the Planning Commission.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, um, any questions, anyone, sorry. All right, so I would make a motion to move up Diana to a regular position and um, that's my motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, now, our next one is going to be the San Marcos Community Foundation. We have.
Madam Mayor, did you want to fill that alternate spot dedicated by Diana Kavanaugh?
Um, well, so the only person that we have, because Guy did not qualify, um, we have Marcelo. Do you want to serve as an alternate on the Planning Commission?
Don't we have to appoint Jim as an alternate?
Jim is an alternate. He's already an alternate.
He stays an alternate, okay.
Yeah, he's already, yes.
Okay.
He's running from a safe seat.
Yes.
Safe. Okay, we get safe seat.
Very nicely stated.
Marcelo, would you like to be an alternate? Okay, uh, Marcelo Kim is going to be an alternate on the Planning Commission then. That's my, that's my motion anyway. Do we have a, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, motion passes. Okay, Marcelo, you are, you need to show up for every meeting, if you can, uh, we definitely want to see you there. Uh, it's really important to have a good attendance record, um, because we definitely take it into account when we are uh, moving people up. So thank you very much for serving. And uh, moving on to the Community Foundation. We have one regular position and we have two um, applicants, that would be Claudia Lober and uh, followed by Monet Gardner. Claudia, come on down. Tell us about yourself, you have two minutes. Is it going to beep? Sorry, I wasn't paying attention to the time, like the whole time. Great, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members and Community Members. Thank you for this opportunity. I was born in the City of Mexico City, huge amount of people. I got, I have had the blessing of observing what happens with city planning. So when I came to the United States to achieve a higher degree of education, I earned an a liberal arts, an AA degree in liberal arts from San Diego Mesa College, where I also extended my knowledge in architecture. Then I went to UCSD to obtain a bachelor's degree in urban studies and planning with an emphasis in environmental studies because it, because it was so theoretical and impractical. I decided to pursue a master's degree in city planning at San Diego State University, which I did. I had the opportunity uh, to work with Sandag in land use, regional uh, land use opportunities. At the same time, I served for, I, I worked for a bi-national planner in the COBRO uh, organization, uh, group, where we worked with DuJona, Mexico and San Diego to determine the meaning of sustainable development. Along the way, I also helped the County of San Diego Land Use with their general plan twenty, at that time it was known as General Plan twenty twenty update. And after that, I went to help City of Escondido, where Mr. J. Patrick was my um, my mentor. And I helped City of Escondido to, with their general plan update as well. After that, I returned to the County of San Diego and they put me again on, in advanced planning, where I continued helping with the general plan update. They had changed the name. It had taken sixteen years for them to update the general plan, but for City of Escondido, it took just a few. Sorry.
Thank you Claudia, thank you.
Sorry.
Appreciate it, no, it's okay, thank you very much. Um, okay, next will be Monet Gardner. Is Monet not here this evening? No, okay. All right, well, um, I would say I make a motion to uh, appoint Claudia Lober to uh, the um, San Marcos Community Foundation.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect. Okay, that concludes our commissions, uh, appointments. Uh, next um, Order of Business will be our public hearing and that is Resolution twenty twenty-two ninety forty-one, adopting the city's twenty twenty-three Regional Transportation Improvement Program projects for fiscal year twenty twenty-three to fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. Do we have someone presenting us this evening?
I'll handle it very briefly, Madam Mayor.
Wonderful, all right, thank you.
Uh, we're required by July first to submit our approved RTIP projects, Regional Transportation Improvement Program projects, to Sandag for their inclusion in the regional plan. Why this is important, because projects that are funded with federal, state, or local transnet funds must be on that plan in order to get that funding and we have this thing called the Creek Project with a lot of federal funding and other funding sources. Uh, so the projects that are on the RTIP before you, were all part of our capital improvement project that you, budget that you approved uh, two weeks ago and it's completely consistent with that. And so we recommend uh, the council approve the resolution and we send our list to Sandag.
Perfect. Any questions, uh, Mr. Griffin, this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have a quick question. Jack, do, are there any new projects on this list that weren't there last year?
Um, let me go through it, I don't believe there are. There are some projects that were funding multiple years. So for instance, like the San Marcos Boulevard reconstruction, that gets money until twenty twenty-five, when that, then it would be fully funded, but I don't think we have anything new on there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing, so do I have a motion to close a public hearing? Oh, no speakers, correct? Didn't see any speakers, I'm sorry.
Move to close.
Okay, we have a motion to close a public hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second, uh, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Mr. Griffin, we can go ahead and uh, submit that. Uh, the next Order of Business is uh, Resolution twenty twenty-two ninety forty-two, Appeal of the Loma San Marcos Conditional Use Permit Renewal, uh, CUP twenty-one dash zero zero four, zero 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 four, for the continued partial operation of a full-service entertainment production facility and phased expansion of the facility in accordance with the Loma San Marcos Specific Plan Area SPA LSM Zone. And this evening, uh, we have actually uh, received a continuance request from the applicant or the appellant, I guess that would be. Um, and so I actually would like to uh, make a motion to continue this until a date certain of July twenty-sixth, which that will be the day, we won't be changing that date. I know that um, the applicant had, or the appellant had uh, notice of this evening, but I think it would be best if we were able to um, go ahead and, and move to have this um, brought forward back on July twenty-sixth. So that's my motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any notes?
I oppose.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, uh, motion passes, three to one. Okay, so we will be continuing that item uh, to a later date on Mar-July twenty-sixth. Okay, um, oral communications, do we have any oral, no, okay. Um, moving on to reports, uh, Sandag, and I didn't bring my notes, but I remember what the most notable uh, thing update was, and that was the audit report uh, came back to us and we uh, actually have a framework of uh, new procedures uh, that will be followed uh, for the P cards, which is the uh, credit cards that are uh, governed by Sandag, but uh, staff members have, there will be a maximum of six uh, card, cards issued and uh, those, well, actually, I think it's actually now just the director. It was six cards after uh, they made the changes in the interim, but just the director and then everything will have to go on a form, which is uh, new. Uh, that's a completely new process and then we will be hearing back uh, the reimbursements and then also the travel expense at a later date, um, and that. and then also the travel expense at a later date. And that's to come. And so our next meeting is in two weeks from, well, I guess a week from this Friday. Two weeks from Friday. Anyway, so that was pretty much all that happened at that meeting. And moving on to League of California Cities, Councilmember Nunez is not here this evening.
We meet July 11th, Mayor.
I'm sorry, what?
Next meeting is July 11th.
July 11th, two weeks, two weeks from Friday. Yes, two weeks from Friday. And then the League of California Cities, Councilmember Nunez is not here this evening. North County Transit District Report, Deputy Mayor Jenkins.
Yes, I have just a couple items. We met on June 16th. Several highlights from the meeting. We did approve our budget. It's $170 million operating budget. Capital improvements, $55 million for this upcoming year. Over the next five years is $120 million as of right now. It is a balanced budget. That's our policy. And staff has done a good job, like the city has, in anticipating increased costs due to inflation. And we have labor shortages at North County Transit and higher energy costs. So they've done a good job of factoring all of that in, but we do have a balanced budget. The second item of note is we're doing some market research and analysis on ways to improve our ridership that took a pretty extreme hit in COVID. And so we have a market research team that is, we had a second presentation. And so they will be exploring some different scenarios. And I think we have two more presentations to come. In transit, there's a lot of studies that are done. And so we have a BREEZE Speed and Reliability Study going on. And that is to examine 10 BREEZE bus routes and identify the high ridership bus routes and then work with the local member cities to see if we can work together to, to study some circulation plans and come up with some projects together that benefit the city and North County Transit. And then the last item is we have free bus fare passes to use. And we added on to that, that if you are former foster youth in San Diego County, if you're 18 to 24, that you can ride also for free on North County Transit and Metropolitan Transit. So we're pretty excited for that. It is, it is a pilot. It's going to run to December of '23. And then they'll determine what the future financial impacts might be. So that's the highlights of our meeting from June.
I have one, I have one quick question. And that is, I saw that some of our routes are actually, I want to say maybe on hiatus, temporarily not happening due to the shortage that you mentioned in, in staffing. And I guess my question is, do we have any idea when they might be able to fill those positions or not?
They're working on enhancements to try to get more drivers.
Yeah.
But the, the numbers just aren't there at this point with, with the drivers that apply and then make it through process to the end. So they're working on it. They're trying to come up with some other ideas. It's pretty common in not only transit, but in other industries too, but they're working on it.
Well, anyone that's out there that knows how to drive a bus, North County Transit.
Or wants to learn.
Yeah, are they, are they doing all their training then? 100%? Like if you've never driven a bus before? If you know how to drive a motorhome, you probably could drive a bus. So I would maybe check that out and see if you could figure that one out. So anyone at home? North County Transit's hiring. Definitely, we need some drivers. Okay, um, clean, I'm sorry, North County Dispatch Joint Powers.
We did not meet. We don't meet for a couple of months.
Okay, Clean Energy Alliance.
We meet this Thursday.
Okay, City Council Business Visit. Did we have some?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Councilmember Walton and I didn't have to go very far. It's one of our tenants in the building. The business visit was with Therapeutic and Wellness Solutions Center. They're up on the third floor of this building. It's a group practice. We met with the principal, Jessica Moran, one of her associates, Jessie, and Mary Alice. And they have a total of eight staff. One is in admin support. The rest are all clinical specialists. One was in session, so we moved away from their main office and went down to, I guess it's a community. On that floor, they have a shared common area. Sat down there for the better part of an hour, hour and a half. Fantastic background information. They moved into the suite the first of June, but they are a longtime San Marcos company or a group of clinicians. They've had offices on Via Vera Cruz and Rancho Santa Fe. They run services, everything from individual couples, sex therapy, PTSD, and family counseling. And the only thing they don't cover are eating disorders. And, you know, initially when they said that, it was like, uh, okay. They're long-term studies and involving, when I say hospitalization, it has to be monitored in hospitals. So they, they really went into a lot of detail as to what they do and why they do it and the services they offer.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was educational for sure. This is, they treat adults, but primarily youth and adolescents. And they mentioned how they've seen the demand for their services rise during COVID and all the, all this complications they had with kids who are at home on telehealth with parents in the back room, in the background, when some of the, some of the issues they were seeing their therapist for had to do with their parents. And you really got a sense that, that they're, they're providing an incredibly valuable professional service that's more needed than you would think, more than I would have thought, quite honestly. And they all came across as very, very experienced. It's nice to have them in town. They've worked closely with our school district and neighboring school districts. That's where they've done a lot of their work over the years. And they're the only privately owned therapeutic behavioral service in the entire county. They're busy and they've been growing. And I can tell you that they, they really, really love San Marcos. And a few of them live here and their commutes are short. And they couldn't be happier being in San Marcos and especially being in this building. So it was great.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, that's, yeah, definitely is needed at this time, unfortunately. Okay.
Mayor, we did ask them about services for veterans because it's a, it's near and dear to me. They, they absolutely will help the veterans. The problem, as with so many veterans seeking services, is the VA and the complications of dealing with the Veterans Administration. But they are of a mindset to not turn anyone away. So to the extent that people are in need of service, but not really able to pay, they will work with them. They have a sliding scale. So they will sometimes match co-pay. They'll do a very bare, when I say bare minimum, probably the bus drivers at NCTD are making more than they would offer for an hour session just to get people back on track. These clinicians are very dedicated and focused to helping. It was really nice to hear from them.
Well, the San Marcos Veterans Center is on the first floor and they actually help connect people to services too. So that might be a possibility to.
That became part of our conversation.
Perfect. You should have gone down there and checked them out so you can figure out how they can meet one another and, and work together. Okay, next order of business is the San Marcos Creek Project.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just quickly, Bent Avenue Bridge, as you know, is open, but it is not open to pedestrian traffic. It'll still be a while before that's the case. We can make the connections to Craven and/or Via Vera Cruz. Well, in respect to Via Vera Cruz, the drilling for the bridge is underway and we'll actually start pouring the first pier in the next week. So that's moving pretty quickly. As you know, Discovery is still closed between Via Vera Cruz and Applewild. That'll still be the case for, for some time here through the summer. Utility work continues in Via Vera Cruz and Discovery and we'll be cutting over from overhead to underground on Bent Avenue this week. And then lastly, we're, the structural work on the Promenade Park Bridge, that's a small pedestrian bridge. It's part of the promenade is resumed and some of the rebar will be placed this week and then concrete not too long after that. So a lot of, a lot of activity. And we're working with the contractor to refine, revise the schedule, develop an updated schedule to try and accelerate things. We did lose some times, you know, try and get it back to as close to as on schedule as we can. So maybe by the next meeting, we'll have some more information on that.
So while the detour is still going on, we definitely want people to make sure that they're careful driving through slowly. There's been a lot of speeding in the Discovery neighborhood, so we definitely want people to slow it down. Remember you're in a neighborhood. You're no longer on Discovery Street, which is a faster-moving road. So anyway, just a reminder for everyone to slow down. And with that, we're on to council commentary. We have Red, White, and Boom coming. That's at Bradley Park. The fireworks, they're back. So all the festivities start around 5 o'clock. That's going to be the entertainment. And then 9 o'clock is when the fireworks are going to happen. So any other commentary this evening? Nope. Okay, with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming, everyone, and have a safe and happy Fourth of July.